I'm a very involved student. I mean, I'm in the symphonic band here. I'm on the JV basketball team. I'm involved in a lot of things and it's really encouraging to know that you guys are talking about this, but it's also discouraging to be at these events and see that there are no board members, there are no teachers, there's no one really but our parents and our families that are also there.
No one else is pumping you up?
Yes. So I think it is really important that there is an effort being made for both the board and among the staff at Warren, that there is an effort being made going to these events. Because it shows us as students that you guys aren't just like, you know, the big scary guys making all these decisions that you guys like actually care about us and what we're doing, not just academically,
We do care.
Yeah, but also in terms of extracurriculars.
Well, speaking from an old politician, it's very important and it was touched down, but if there's a board member there, they should be introduced. Make sure everybody knows there's a board member there, or two, or three.
And that's what I was gonna ask you, because like some of these events, you know, the honor society and those, you know, until COVID, we would be introduced. But at a basketball game, I don't, I'm not sure that's necessarily.
No, but if they see our face.
But that's, that's one thing I struggle with. So I've been to sports events, as just, and I've been to other things here. Nobody knows who I am, and I'm fine with that.
But then what's the point?
Well, the point is, just to support them. The point is right in here.
Right, but she's also saying that it's-
And that's what, that's, that's my dilemma.
Because she wants to know if somebody's there.
Yeah.
It definitely comes with exposure, like more specifically with band concerts. Your guys' names are on the back of the brochure, but we always laugh because we're like, oh, you know, all these people's names are there, but there's nobody here. And it's just, you know, we look out and we're like, oh, you know, we see our parents, we see our siblings. Occasionally, we see someone from the administration there, but that's it. And it, showing up to those things where you guys do have your names places, that will come with the exposure to then be able to go to the sports games and be like, oh, you know, oh, look, there are board members here. And that's how students will be able to recognize you guys and also just know what you guys do.
So I'll paraphrase it a little bit differently, not quite as polite as you did. If we'd get off our butts and go to more events, we'd become familiar strangers. So then if you saw us at another event, you might go, hey, I know you from somewhere.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
You might go, well, stand up and yell.
So.
I'm gonna have a big fat head face at Addie for the next basketball game.
Right, we do.
Who's that old man cheering me on?
What I'm, what I'm interpreting maybe, and part of what I'm getting from Addie's comments are, maybe one of the ways we're looking at the list of event expectations are, are there some more formal events where there's a program, your name is listed, like a concert or National Honor Society recognition. There's a program, your name's listed, that might be more likely to be something that's under expectations. We try to make sure we got at least one board member at those. And then we do a better job at making sure you have an annual calendar of events.
What's going on?
Well, and Mr. President, you could, you could put a little moral authority on this. You could say, Steve, you haven't been anything in three months. Why don't you just show up? You know, that sort of thing. I mean, I, I would accept that. Fine with me.
Okay. One thing the school board could do, you will have a new member here in a few weeks, and we'll formalize who's returning members, is you could decide as a board how, some goals that you want to set for yourselves. And are there some things that, some targets we want to set for ourselves?
Talked about training too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because some events, even if we're on the back of a program, I don't know if I'd want to be introduced.
Sure.
Like at band, it's all about the people on the stage performing.
Yeah.
I don't want to- Yeah, I don't want to distract from it. It's all about you.
I disagree.
I disagree too.
I think if people need to know there's a board, I could sit there in the corner and people would do that, because that, you know, and I've been around for 20 years, and a certain number of people know me, but a whole lot of people wouldn't. And I think, you know.
Because if they see you at Juul, then they're more comfortable to come to you and say, hey, I thought about this, or hey, you have more connection.
Some of us just got elected for four years, and nobody's running for office here anymore. And it's not a political thing. It's just that I think it'd be important, if there's a board member there, that everybody know it.
Yeah.
And I'll always be on the fence of that, because it's borderline between, you know, supporting and always being the face, hey, I'm here again, because you know what? Part of that should be our job, just to be there. And I don't want to distract from the student activities. I don't want to timeout during a basketball game to say, hey, here's the board members that showed up tonight.
Not at a basketball game, but some expected events would be appropriate.
And that's what we need to clarify.
If I can, I can work on a first draft of that and differentiate.
I'm not sure if you guys do know this, but you guys actually are recognized at band concerts. We do actually, there's either one of the band directors or one of the students would be like-
So you politely making me feel any worse. This is really great.
And thank you for like the administration, the board members. And so, just so you guys know, you guys are actually now-
Addie, did you hear that? Your clock is up.
Don't listen.
No, thank you so much for your feedback on that. That's great.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Moving on.
I have one more thing to say on the summer community mailer.
Yeah.
Which is not about the information at all, but we have been participating with the village.
Yes.
In a mailer that is, so we could weave that into supplying this information as well. Because that has information from all the districts and the village, but just-
Does that save us cost?
That's good to know.
Well, yeah, for sure. If we just did that, it would save us cost.
We do, the, the village puts out a mailer on an annual basis. It's got information from multiple, multiple groups.
The library, all three of the districts, and the village.
Definitely.
And who? And the Park District. Who could forget them? Fit Nation.
Fit Nation. We got a discount there?
No. I don't. It's not working. Okay.
All right.
Let's move on to the student committee then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So for student committee, I see that we have three topics, at least in our board packet, but I believe there might be some slides that have additional information as well, just looking at a preview here of what we're gonna be showing. Curriculum update, student handbook discussion and changes for next year, and then our staffing priorities. So I'm not sure, Dr. Danny, which one you want to start with?
Yeah, let's start with, maybe we'll start with student handbook, just because that's the order that I put them in on the slide.
Yeah, that's fine. And then there was a memo on that as well.
All right, so one of the requests for the handbook is just relooking at our fees and the impact on students if they don't have fees. So part of the decision process, I think the board wanted to wait on for long-term decisions, was just making sure we could get you some information on fee collection to date, once prom happened. So prom tickets were sold through the first couple of days of April. And this is just, I'm gonna go through fee collection and kind of where we're at with fee collection. So this year, we've collected, you know, 1.2 million dollars in fees. Last year, we had collected about 2.3 million dollars, but fees were significantly higher last year. So as a percentage of regular collection, we're at 94, 96 percent, so fairly similar. We've also, this year, we partnered with a pre-collection organization that sends out pre-collection letters to students. We focused on students with, or families with the highest amount of overdue fees, and have been able, year to date, to collect about $85,000 in pre-collections amount. So we're really, probably the numbers there in fee collection are pretty similar.
What's the percentage that the collection agency is taking?
This is a flat fee.
Oh, okay, great.
For the pre-collections, it's a fat, flat fee. So we pay them just a fee per family.
Oh, okay.
And then they send out notices.
Is that, you know, when I saw this chart, when you handed us this, did that surprise you that it's about the same collection rate last year and this year? Because if memory serves right, was there not a concerted effort a year ago to capture as much? Or am I thinking previous years, or?
Mike, can you pull your mic down?
Much direct certified as we possibly could therefore.
Okay. Then I may be misremembering.
Yeah.
So there's probably not a whole lot of difference between year to year in efforts on our part, too.
The pre-collections would be the major difference in efforts for this year versus any other year.
I don't think we'll really see what the pattern is until we're in two, three years.
And that's a pretty good rate, too. It's, yeah, for sure.
And then prom ticket enrollment, or prom tickets sold, is basically the same. About half of our juniors and seniors buy a ticket from prom. And I don't think, I think that's, we took out the COVID years, so that looks like it's literally the same. So.
We didn't ban people from going to prom this year.
Correct.
So we have to memorialize that for next year in the student handbook.
That's what is under consideration.
Did we, did we, I don't want to say announce, but did we communicate this in any way? Where like students would know, hey, I know past practice has been that if you, your family owes fees, you can't buy a ticket, but you're allowed to this year, however you would word it. Did we communicate that at all somehow?
Generally, our communication was just the absence of a, hey, you can't buy this if you are. In the past, part of the notices to families has been if you have overdue fees or fines and you're not gonna be able to purchase a prom ticket. We just didn't have that message as part of it.
Right, but what I'm saying still is, when that's embedded in your brain, even if you don't see that notice anymore, your brain's still thinking, oh, well, my mom and dad owed the past two years, so this just doesn't apply to me still.
We didn't proactively communicate that part of it. So I think that is, that is definitely part of what we would call substantive changes for the handbook this year. Other areas that we're working on changes for are bus conduct and safety, cellphone utilization, and attendance causes. So we're hoping to have some discussion tonight, if there are other areas that the board feels like we should be addressing in the student handbook. We would come back probably on April 25th with a recommendation for board approval. And then over the summer, probably have some amendments. Those are the four big areas that we thought were most important. We have tried to include some bus conduct and safety areas in our work right now as we draft that up, just to respond to some continued concerns on the buses. The dance ticket is something that the board could give us some feedback on. Cellphone utilization, the real priority here is just trying to clarify with students that videotaping other people in the school district is not appropriate. It's not legal in most situations, but-
Federal offense.
Yeah, students videotaping staff members and/or other students for a variety of reasons is a pretty, it's all over the place, and we just need to help students understand that. And then there are legally some different reasons students can be excused for their absences. There's lots of other changes in the handbook. These are probably substantive ones.
One of the things that got beaten into my head when I addressed, or not addressed, I tried to sit back of some of the sessions with the teachers, faculty, was cellphone. Do you have, I mean, this is maybe premature, but I mean, from what I understand it, I'd be interested in knowing what other school districts are doing. I mean, can you ban them? Should you ban them? To what degree? You know, I'd like to know what other people are doing and if there's any success in it. Because it's very, very much of a concern to the faculty, from what I've heard.
Yeah. Probably will ask Dr. Keeley to comment on this. I'll, I'll give some thoughts, and then if Dr. Keeley could add anything when I'm done. Generally, cellphone usage is a problem in most school districts. I would say, just like it's probably a problem in most households, like the utilization of cellphones on a regular basis by people in situations that are not socially acceptable in past standards is something that we're all trying to work through. You know, school districts used to have bans on them, and the risks you have with bans is the response, what you do in response to a student that brings a cellphone or utilizes the cellphones. Back in the day, we used to take them from the student, and it was very common for school districts to take the cellphone from a high school student, hold on to it for multiple days, only give it back to a parent. There's some liabilities and risks with taking a thousand-dollar piece of equipment from someone. And most people escalate pretty quickly if you try to take their cellphone away from them now. There are some legal repercussions now with, some school districts for a while did things like, they put up, they bought equipment that would keep cellphones from working. Those have now become illegal. There's a lot of risks and stipulations around trying to force students not to use their cellphone. Most school districts now are doing some sort of teacher discretion. A lot of teachers actually will have the kids use their cellphones now, so just completely banning them would be difficult, because students are doing assignments on them, they're interacting with teachers through them. So a lot of times, there's some discretion for teachers and how they want to utilize cellphones. Generally, the problems we have with cellphones are, they're videotaping each other, they're antagonizing each other, or they're just watching TV or Netflix during school on a pretty regular basis. And it's hard to engage them that way. I don't, I don't know, Dr. Keeley, if you have anything to add to that around what other school districts are trying to do to? Quick examples, I'll give you, Mr. Carlson, my peer parents in my neighborhood have recognized over the last couple of years that if they, they thought that they could use a phone to track their kid when they go to parties at night, well, the kids just put their phone in their buddy's mailbox, and then they all go somewhere else. And in the same way, while some teachers are trying to do the pouches, kids just bring an old phone from home, put it in the pouch, and then they're still just hanging out on their phone under their desk. It's a really, it's a really tough issue. It's a societal issue. The best thing we can do is try to just build social skills, but also make sure that we've got really engaging activities for kids to be involved in during the day.
If I see you watching Netflix, I grab your phone. And I grab it for the period, and you pick it up on the way out. But at least I should have the right to do that. Something, just a suggestion.
Yeah, I appreciate that suggestion.
I also think, I'm sorry, go ahead. I want to say that I've been on the receiving end of every cellphone policy, probably in the book, to, you know, you can have your cellphone during class with no repercussions, to having, to put my phone in a caddy, to having a teacher take away a cellphone if they see it out. And from what I've seen, it definitely is much more effective to have us put them in a caddy at the beginning of class. It, nobody likes it. No student wants that to put their phone away. But in the classes that I do have to put a phone in a caddy, I noticed that I, who, I'm not a huge fan of my phone, I would say less than most students, but I noticed that I'm less distracted to, you know, have that knee-jerk reaction of, oh, class is really boring right now, let me just pull out my phone, because I don't have my phone to pull out. That's been the most effective cellphone policy probably that I've seen. Um, that's been the most effective cell phone policy probably that I've seen. Um, I have, uh, the one class that I'm thinking of where I took my phone in my caddy. Um, that's how that teacher actually takes attendance. So if your phone isn't in the caddy, you get marked absent for that class, even if you were there. Um, so that's even more of an incentive to make sure your phone is in the caddy. Um, and that's what I've seen has been really the most effective policy out of all of the ones that I've seen.
Are most kids in your class pretty open and receptive to, to that caddy?
Yeah, I mean, the first couple of weeks, everybody kind of grumbles and it's like, oh, why do we have to do this? And then it's just kind of like a, hey, if your phone's not in the caddy, you get marked absent. And after, I don't know, eight absences, I think it's a penalty. I'm not entirely sure. But after that, it's just kind of like, hey, you gotta do it, otherwise, you know, there's X, Y, and Z that's gonna happen. So I mean, no student likes it. I mean, you're gonna find that with any policy. There's always gonna be, I mean, probably every student's gonna grumble no matter what you do. But, um, in the long run, it's been the one that I've seen that has the least amount of issues because it's not something that students can, you know, super easily fake.
I'm gonna bring this back just for a second because probably any one of these topics, we could spend a, a long time on. Is there anything related to the cell phone discussion that would impact the handbook? Cause the reason why this is here is for the changes to the handbook. Maybe we want to do is table and have a more holistic discussion on cell phones at a later point. Or if there's time, we can amend that section if we have it sooner rather than later. Um, part of what I worry is cell phones is like a whole, that's a whole topic in and of itself. And all these things are awesome suggestions, but, um, at least for the purpose of this discussion is just to approve handbook changes. So I, I'm proposing, we just kind of hold on it. Is there anything, and if that, if everyone's in agreement, if that, do you have what you need for the handbook? And is there time still yet if this discussion goes further to?
Yeah, definitely. It does sound like I've got support. We have support around strengthening the cell phone language generally.
Yeah, that gets through pretty clear.
So we'll bring suggestion changes, uh, at the next meeting. That allows us to get an initial approval for registration. And then we are assuming that there'll be additional changes either from the board or from our end in July with legal updates. We can continue to have that conversation for months if we like to.
Yeah, I, I mean, if it's that important to the teachers and it's that important to us, I definitely recommend us continuing. Maybe just not now.
Yeah.
For what it's worth, I like the idea of make them bring a cell phone.
Yeah.
I like that.
So one of the, really quick, one of the things that Mike, that I had suggested prior, um, about the cell phone, um, is that we put a cell phone agreement, say, like in registration, if it's not too late. So the parent and the student has to check off that they agree to what our cell phone policy is.
But we may adapt our cell phone policy.
Yeah, adapt.
Still yet to agree upon it, so.
Yes, yes.
Likely, your suggestion is correct. We want to have parents involved in this because they're the ones that are going to, like the amount of administrative time, if they were just to enforce cell phone issues would be massive.
Right.
But we need to land philosophically to back up.
Right.
Yeah, so I, and I actually don't even remember, when is the timeline?
July.
Okay. Gotcha.
So we, I mean, I would think that you guys still have some time to incorporate that in your registration for next year.
Great. Can we move on to the next topic?
Um, let's see, I'm gonna give the mic over to Chris to give an update on just curriculum efforts.
Okay, so, uh, just kind of giving you an update of where we're at now, um, after, so last time we talked about teaching learning was really around course selection time back in the fall. Uh, so over the past several months, we've really started to do a, a dive into, uh, career pathways and career pathway endorsements here at Warren. Um, so beginning, uh, in February, we began to meet monthly with the lead teachers. Uh, really what we're trying to do is build a common understanding of career pathways and career pathway endorsements, uh, which is the ISB program and how that can apply here at Warren. So defining district goals, uh, building a common understanding, a common vocabulary. So we're all working from the same place with our instructional leaders. Uh, so we're in the process of that right now. We're gonna meet, meet again next week, uh, for our April meeting, uh, where we're gonna dive into a lot of the ISB requirements around this and, uh, kind of keep our lead teachers up to date with some of the developments through ISB. Um, we'll meet one more time in May to get ready for our summer work, uh, which is to do is begin an analysis of our potential career pathways that we have with our current coursework. Uh, so departments are going to begin aligning their courses that they offer to the seven, uh, pathway areas that are identified by ISB. Uh, and that's really a first step in a gap analysis that we're, we're beginning. So we want to see where are we at, uh, what pathways do we have? What pathways do we kind of have? Where do we, what do we want to have? Um, and what, what do we need to build to establish those programs? So we're really kind of getting that work started over, um, the summer. So when we come back in the fall, we can work through that together, uh, and begin to develop a long-term plan to get us, um, uh, get us up and running. So, uh, we do anticipate having some sort of career pathway packaging for, uh, students and families, uh, next year. Um, we don't know exactly what that'll look like. A lot of that'll depend on what comes out of that summer work, uh, that our lead teachers and PLT leaders and departments are gonna be working on with, with us over the summer. Uh, so like I said, in the fall, we're gonna come back, we're gonna review that analysis and identify some potential things that we can, uh, put together and share. But also we're gonna be looking to what do we need to build? What do we need to develop? Uh, so we can start to put those plans together. What certifications do we need? Um, what facilities, uh, do, do we need to reallocate or figure out how to house programs? Cause a lot of this, uh, falls in the consumer technical education areas, which require different types of instructional spaces. Uh, and then we also have to do kind of an analysis, uh, with the, uh, the technology campus and what do, what pathways exist at the tech campus? Uh, because those are actually gonna be the first pathway endorsements that we offer will be through the tech campus. But we want to make sure that we're establishing a lot of endorsement opportunities for our kids within the, our, within our walls. Um, and then, you know, alongside of all this, because, uh, actually before I get to that last bullet point, so that logo, that graphic over there on the right, that's really what the pathway endorsement is. So we've heard the term career pathways for a long time and really a career pathway is a sequence of courses that helps to get kid, uh, kid ready for a, a career after high school, right? It could be, might involve some college, but it could get them ready for the trades, uh, a variety of things that can look like. Um, ISB is defined a career pathway endorsement. Uh, and what that is, is if a student, uh, accomplishes a series of things while in high school aligned to a specific area, um, then they get, receive an endorsement on their transcript. And there's still some conversation at ISB right now about what's the currency involved in that? Like seal by literacy, a kid will get college credit, right? If they earn a seal by, by literacy. Right now, there's no currency attached to a, a, a career pathway endorsement, but there's a lot of conversations right now with, uh, industry and colleges about what a pathway endorsement could mean for, what's the advantage for a student to have it?
So you're saying like when they go through the vocational program and they are now a mechanic by the time they graduate, they would get a, this endorsement?
Problem is this endorsement means nothing to people who are actually in the trades. Like getting them to either recognize this or have this align, I'm assuming, with some kind of industry standard certifications to prove that they have some baseline level of knowledge. So when they get hired, part-time or full-time, like there's something there that says it. So they either this, either people need to start believing that this means something or this needs to align with industry standard certifications.
So would those students still have to go through the tech campus to get some other kind of certification to make them more acceptable in that field? Or hirable?
Not necessarily. So it's, it, it really depends. It, I think there's like two different things that we're talking about there. There's courses at the tech campus, um, which a lot of the tech campus programs could potentially stand alone as, to earn a pathway endorsement through. Um, it depends on some of the requirements that we'll get to in a second, like what goes into that. But the way Tony put it is a really good way of looking at it. It really is, we're, kids are in, like, kids are investigating these skills in these fields when they're in high school and it's low stakes, right? They can get through two, three years of a pathway endorsement with us and realize like, hey, I thought I wanted to be an engineer when I was 14. I hate this. Like, I don't want to do this. Well, we've figured that out now when we're a junior in high school, not in our second year at University of Illinois. Right? So there, there's a lot of value in that. Or we also have the opportunity to create a lot of, uh, a lot of choices for kids at post-secondary. So if you think about it in terms of a trades and they go through a, a pathway endorsement program where part of it is they have to have a large, large amount of work experience. Maybe when they get into, um, if they go into the field, right? Maybe they don't start at the lowest level. Maybe they get some credit for a year of work or something like that. There's some sort of benefit to that. And that's kind of what Tony was saying too, I think, was like getting the people that are actually like the, the businesses that are accepting these kids as, as employees right outside, right out of high school. Is there some recognition of the work that that kid has done before they begin? Uh, so to help kind of get, give them a leg up and make it, there be another advantage for that, that person after they graduate from high school. So the way this kind of works is the individual plan happens, uh, during the freshman or sophomore year. A kid, and we do this right now, all of our students in the freshman, sophomore year take a career interest inventory. Um, and that tells, kind of tells them based on your interests, there's some careers that might, may have some, you know, you might like. Uh, and so what students will do is they build, um, an individual plan that would be aligned to a career pathway area. Uh, and then there's three parts, uh, to earn the endorsement. The first part is the traditional academics. Those are our core courses. Those are math, English, science, social studies, being college-ready and, and reading, writing and, and mathematics, uh, when you graduate. Then there's the sequence of career courses. Those are the classes, uh, that are specific to that field or specific to that endorsement area. That's where dual credit, six, so it's two years of coursework, six credits or, uh, two college-level courses must be, two courses must be, uh, dual credit or AP or some sort of college-level course. So, uh, where tech campus, uh, has this kind of locked up already is a lot of tech campus courses, they're dual credit, they're articulated credit. A lot of them are six, seven, eight, nine, 10 course, uh, nine, 10 credits. Uh, some of, especially the ones that are two-year programs at tech campus. So, but that sequence of career courses, that's where the dual credit lives. They have to be specific to the field and at least six credits of post-secondary level education. Then the workforce experience, in order to earn that endorsement, you have to have 60 hours of internship or work-based learning experience as part of the endorsement. And if you've accomplished all of those things in your four years, that earns you the, uh, the endorsement on your diploma. So that's how the program's set up.
Quick question, I don't want to belabor this too much, but I know, I feel like you were working on this prior to ISB coming out with the requirement for it. So my question to you, is there any of that good work that you were doing? Is it being overshadowed by ISB requirements? Are we now having to focus on ISB requirements and take away any great opportunity? Sometimes ISB does not always know best. So are there great opportunities for kids that now you can't do because ISB came out and said this?
No, so I was, I was pretty leery of this a little bit when I was first, cause it was very ethereal for a very long time. And I had that same worry, Tony, but now I feel like the way that this is structured gives us an opportunity. Take some of the things that we were talking with our, our teachers about, like, looking at, like, let's look at what, how this is gonna help prepare a student for life after high school. And it's, it's giving us some formality to it too. And it's really, I think it's really going to help us make good decisions about courses and how we structure our programs, uh, moving forward. So, and the way that we're approaching it is, I'm talking to the, the lead teachers a lot about, there's career pathways. Let's start talking about our career pathways first. And then we can figure out the endorsement part later, but let's first start with like, what are the pathways? What are the careers that we think we're getting kids ready for now? Then I see this as a way that we can take some of those really well-developed programs and strengthen them even more.
Question. There. So my question to you is, is there anything that you want from them that you're having difficulty getting that you might be able to leverage?
So.
In return for more students?
So right now, CLC has been an amazing partner. Um, for my, in my five years in this position, they have been amazing partners for us and we are dual credit programs and, uh, have grown tremendously because of our positive relationship. Um, the problem that we run into with round dual credit is credentialing. And it's, it's something that's kind of outside of CLC's control, um, because it. We, right now I'm participating on some state-level committees, uh, that are working to address the credentialing issue. So it's a combination of, uh, uh, high school, uh, curriculum leaders, superintendents, and also some representatives from community colleges, uh, and, uh, the ICCB, the Illinois Community Co- Community College Board to try and you, like, create some sort of unified approach, a way to build, uh, dual credit capacity and credentialing with existing teachers and also strengthen teacher preparation programs to create more certified teachers. So right now, there's a really good collaboration. Uh, I'm working with, uh, Sarah Stashku from CLC. Uh, we talk regularly and we're constantly working together to try and figure out ways. I, I will say that, um, when we worked on, uh, we wanted to increase our dual credit science. Um, and Sarah and I worked very closely together pushing on, like, we want to stand up this dual credit chemistry class. We're gonna be the first people in Lake County to do that and we were able to get, because of our size, we were able to get that done.
I'm looking for somebody to lobby. Whose, whose decision is this?
I don't, I haven't really thought about that, Steve. Like, I can think about, I've talked about it through, through it with Danny and get back to you.
Legislature or, um, somebody's appointed by who? I'm looking for somebody, some way to approach this.
There's not, I, I, I think the, the person, the people to approach is really, it's, it's the Illinois Board of Higher Ed and the ICCB with the, I, I do not know.
No, the real, the real problem is they don't have masters in their core teaching area. That's right. That's the problem, right?
Right, it's two different, it's two different certification bodies.
Right, but our teachers have masters, but they could be a math teacher and have a masters in administration, not a masters in math. And to dual, dual credit, you have to have a masters in, in your core teaching area.
You, yes, or you have a masters and then 18 postgraduate credits, right? It's this, yep.
That's, the, the credentialing he's talking about is just our teachers haven't, and it's not a, it's not a fault. It's not something that's wrong with them. It's just that that's not been the path they've been looking for over the years.
Correct.
So now, now we have to, part of it might be helping them on incentivizing some of our teachers to
Yes.
get masters in their core area.
Yes.
Is there any way to?
To help us and to help CLC.
Correct.
Is there any way to, and don't misinterpret, uh, ease the requirements to allow people that are qualified that might not fit the? I mean, I think in terms of, we can't find a psychologist, so fine, we could, all I'm saying is that there any way to, to, to fill this gap with people that are qualified but might not be qualified out of the current rules?
So right now, that conversation, well, exactly what you're talking about is a conversation that has changed dramatically in the last three months. So I work, I'm working with the P-20 network, cause they're out of NIU. So that's the, that's the, they kind of work together with the colleges and the high schools to try and make this thing go. Um, and we're working right now, uh, with, I'm on a task force with some other, other high school and college people. We're looking at exactly what you're talking about, Steve, like, can we figure out a way? If somebody's been teaching AP math in high school for 15 years, can we please make them dual credit certified? Right? And that's, that's the work of that task force right now.
That's why we're not doing it, of course.
Right.
Cause it makes sense.
If I could, if I could throw my two cents in here on pathways, I think this is worth continuing, like, having regular conversations about. Because really what the state did when they created this endorsement is they did, they created a framework that we, is considered now the standard of excellence. So I think Chris is right. We initially, the focus needs, we've been doing traditional academics, the yellow circle forever. That's what we experienced in high school. That's what most students serve experience in high school. The next step for us is how do we make sure that they have that pathway, that sequence of courses in a career interest area that gives them some exploration options? But what the state is doing with the framework is they're saying, we want you to rethink your high school experience. By putting a workforce experience requirement in there, that's what, 60 hours? Plus a requirement that, um, some of your sequence of career courses earns you some type of certification or college credit. They're asking us to retool. It's a significant retool. It'll take years. The state has to retool some things, the certification bodies have to retool some things. But they're asking us to reimagine the high school experience so that includes workforce, specifically preparation.
They may leave, like, at the end of their day, a seventh period, they may leave after a sixth period and go to their workforce thing. And that would be a credit
Correct.
for them in their, towards graduation.
There's, and now there's an endorsement specifically for work-based learning that's been updated.
Which is super exciting, cause how many years have we talked about school being relevant? And having relevance, and it's finally happening. Lot of work to get there, but.
Some private schools do that already, like they take a day and that day is the student's work day. Like they get inserted in Abbott or the different companies around here.
And I think, I think, I'm sorry, Tony.
Nope.
I was gonna say, one other thing I want to add to is like, when we talk about the career pathway endorsements, I think it's important to note too is there, there's a tremendous amount of application in our industrial technology and our business departments. Right? It's a very clear application there, but there's also applications in science, in English, in fine arts across the. Right? It's a very clear application there, but there's also applications in science, in English, in fine arts across the board for some occupations that might start right after high school and also some occupations that require a college degree. So this isn't, in the way that we're approaching this, isn't just looking in one certain program. We're looking at it holistically to make sure that all of our students, no matter what their plans are for after high school, have access to some sort of pathway endorsement.
So this is exciting stuff. I think it's another topic we could probably spend forever on, but unless you have anything further, I recommend we move on to.
I just, before we go, I just wanted to highlight, one of the things that we've been talking a lot about is dual credit expansion, just that last bullet point. So next year we've added a dual credit in science and in our business department. Right now we're in the, kind of the initial phase, exploratory phase in fine arts, which is art and theater, music and industrial technology. So we're excited to hopefully, hopefully be bringing some more dual credit in, in those areas next year.
Very exciting stuff. Thank you.
Okay, so title grants, everybody's favorite, my favorite topic, nobody else's but mine. So title grant process is underway. So every spring, we get the initial consolidated district plan is released by the state. That's this plan, this giant document that we fill out that says, here's what our, what we're going to do with our, our title money next year and titles one, two, three, four, and IDEA. So Title One is for at-risk programming, two is professional development, three is for our English learning students, four is what we use a lot for our student services work, and then IDEA is our special education grant. So it's a huge project that Dr. Keely, myself, Cara Garland, and many, many others work on over the course of the spring. Also, we have to consult with non-public schools. So if we have students that are attending non-public schools, we get to kind of get that list of schools from the state and we have to reach out and see if they're interested in utilizing any funds that they might be eligible for. So we're in those processes right now. Our Title One Plan Development for FY24, so we will be filing again next year for a school-wide waiver. We did that for the first time last year thanks to Dr. Engel's efforts to get our free and reduced lunch population more accurately represented. So right now, we're working on developing that Title One Plan. We're reviewing our academic and social-emotional data to help us put that together so we can make updates to our, our current plan to continue to meet our district needs. We would then bring that to you in, at the next board meeting to review the FY24 proposed plan and our proposed Title One waiver for the board to approve so we can submit that, that to the state. That's all part of the preliminary work. And the big, the, one of the big benefits of having a school-wide program is if we were targeted like we used to be, we can only use Title One money with certain students who are identified as academically at risk. It has to be tied to academics only. When we are school-wide, we can use that throughout the building to address students who are at risk. And that allows us then to utilize that, those funds to support us and our student services and social-emotional learning and those needs as well as the academic needs. Our current low-income population is 34%. Last year I believe we were right around there, 30, I think we reported 36% last year on the waivers, so we're holding steady.
How accurate is that? Is there any way to verify that and could we appeal it?
Our, that's, those are our numbers.
Those are our numbers? They're not census numbers?
No, those are our numbers from Dr. Engel's work.
Thank you.
Our numbers should be higher, but right now we're holding at 34%. If we were to look like our feeders, we should be right around 42 and a half, 43%.
Because my, my question would be if we could hit that 40, we should.
Yeah, which is why you approved a position for family outreach that we have posted and will be given.
Full-time or part-time?
It's a full-time position.
Yeah.
So the difference between the 34 and the 40 is at 40%, we wouldn't have to file the waiver annually. Grant allocations. So the allocations for FY24 have not yet been released. Those usually come out late May, early June or so. We're anticipating a return to normal allocations next year. So a lot of that rollover from COVID has been spent down. We're expecting around $300,000 in that neighborhood for Title One, about $50,000 for Title Two, $15,000 for Title Three, and about $20,000 for Title Four. Those are kind of, as I look back at our historical initial allotments, that's about where we've been. So we're expecting that and then we'll get that initial allotment over the summer. Then as the state processes our, our spending reports, in the fall, we get another round of rollover money that we then allocate into those grants. S R two has expired. That, that grant is done. The last year for S R two was last year. FY24 will, is the final year for S R three, so next year's the last year. And what will happen with that grant is the state will, again, will calculate everything and we'll actually have to file a new application for S R three with a final plan that we'll share with the board before we can file that to the state.
When's that due date?
They have not released that system. All we know is that the S R three, the new S R three application should be released this summer. We can file it at any time. It's just, the, the expenses need to be done by June, June 30th of '24. That's the, those are the COVID grants from the federal government.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
We've got staffing stuff kind of mixed in with the budget report, budget priorities. Good to go?
Yeah. Go ahead.
All right. So before we kind of wrap up and, or get started here in Operations Committee, I, I just wanted to make sure the board knows that we have Jeff Masters here tonight. We, we brought on Jeff, that was about three or four months ago to help us with long-term facilities planning and kind of day-to-day projects, if you will, of, of larger scopes. He comes with, he comes to us with about 40 years of experience working for Gil Bane. His background, his background in specialties are classrooms and teaching spacing, spaces, performance arts facilities, physical education, athletic, athletic facilities, swimming pools, central plants, HVAC, electrical improvements, solar energy installations, administrative spaces and offices, and also vehicle maintenance garages. And he's also LEED certified in sustainable construction practices. So we're going to be going through some stuff tonight. And I also have Jose Zires here too, our Director of Building and Grounds. We're going to be going through kind of a brief kind of history first before we start going into like the school facility planning and maintenance programs that we've kind of devised here. But going back to 2017, the district would allocate about $750,000 annually to help with capital improvements. That number of $750,000 annually was never enough, but it really helped. And subsequent years since then, the budget has drastically decreased from 750,000 down to 400,000, down to 250,000 annually. And the district has found itself in a deferred slash capital development drought. And there's many things that are needing attention. So kind of to, to look at this, we, we wanted to come up with programs to help. And this would be in conjunction with like DLA's master facilities plan that's going to be available here in August. But we wanted to come up with different aspects of the schools, different maintenance programs to help with the smoothness of operations. And also because it becomes more reliable for the school to kind of go on and there's no surprises. And stuff doesn't slip through, through the cracks, if you will. So the first thing that I wanted to kind of go through with everybody here tonight is just kind of classrooms. And I know, I, I believe Jeff wanted to say a couple of things on classroom stuff here, but we wanted to look at classrooms holistically from like a standpoint of, here's classroom, here's LVT tiles, carpet flooring.
Before Jeff jumps in, can I, so one of, what we're going to be asking you here at the end of this conversation is, does it make sense to the board to put together, at the same time that we're receiving the long-term full facility assessment, that we're also putting together a regular maintenance, preventative maintenance program for each of these areas? And if you've got other areas you think we should be including in that, that's great. But we're look, we don't want to do too much work on this if it's something that we're, we're not hitting in the right direction. Yeah, John?
So my first question is, are, are we, these things that we wouldn't get from DLA? Are some of these things we wouldn't get from DLA? So, but some of these things we would get from DLA. So I,
DLA is going to give.
I understand. I understand what they're doing, but I just want, if there's things other than what we're going to get from DLA, then I think that would be a valuable conversation. If we're going to talk about things we're going to get from DLA anyway, I don't know why we would need, unless it's something that needs to be done right now. I mean, we don't, it's not that it's a waste of time, but it's, we're going to be talking about it when we get that report from them anyway.
Yeah, that's a fair question.
We, the classrooms and how they're done are a different issue, I'm sure, so.
Well, what, what we've been doing so far is really trying to get, what I've been trying to do is get familiar with your facilities, but also, you know, working with Mike and, and Jose, you know, what are the, what projects are you aware of, things that are wearing out or things like that? And that, that's one thing to consider is, you know, your buildings, you know, O'Plane is fairly old. You know, I mean, obviously Almond is newer, but really look at it, it's approaching 26 years old. So, you know, things are going to start to be going bad and, and really you need a plan to, you know, how are those going to be budgeted? You know, and, and, you know, the budget's going to go up and down depending on what needs to be done. But I would be my strong recommendation to put together a plan of, like dealing with classrooms, how many, maybe you're going to renovate or, you know, repaint, you know, dress them up. You know, do 20 every year or something like that. So you've got an ongoing process. Instead of letting everything accumulate where you get to, you know, you've got so many that you have to do that it's, it's a capital project as opposed to just an ongoing maintenance thing. And some of that can be done very efficiently with really, you know, without having to go back to the public as long as money is budgeted to do it as part of your annual process. And we, you know, Mike and I are working on, you know, mapping out a timeline, probably master plan for as far as facilities, probably five to 10 years of, you know, what are the projects that we're identifying that will need to be done in, you know, three years, five years, you know, out years of 10? And put, have a, a process and a, and a schedule that maps out when you think things are going to happen. And DLA's assessment will fit into that. I mean, but they're going to give us a lot more detail on certain things, particularly the systems, the exterior and that sort of thing. But a lot of these things you'll see are just normal maintenance and preservation of things that you want to continue to get your life expectancy out of them.
Currently, we currently don't have a preventive maintenance schedule or program. So right now, what Jeff's describing is our situation. We're waiting, we're not doing anything. And so in order to, we'll get to the point where we really need to do it everywhere and it becomes a capital project. So this would keep some of these things from becoming capital projects.
Right. And some of it potentially could be done by in-house staff, you know, as opposed to having to hire a contractor at a premium cost.
I think that's, I think we should have an ongoing plan. There's no doubt about that. I don't think, I personally don't feel like we need to go through it line by line at this point to understand what each one of those means. I'd like to see what a plan looks like. You know, and say, yeah, that's, how much money does that take? And we say, yeah, okay, let's go.
First recognition is have a budget.
Right.
Is it enough? And then prioritize, you know, how many years you want to map out the classroom improvements or, you know, exterior, things like that. But, and then just, and then start assigning costs to individual items so you can see how that tracks against your budget and whether you need to allocate more or less or, you know, when, when you get certain big things that are going to come up and need to be done. For, I mean, example, maybe it's the turf field at O'Plane. You know, that's, you know, five or $600,000 you need to budget at some point.
Do we have to also plan on deposits that we would make on certain things so the cost of the work isn't going up for us? Like if we decide in two years, that's what, when we're going to do it, we can lock in at a particular rate if we put a deposit now?
Well, part of the process will be to identify how we can be as efficient as possible. If we can lock in, instead of maybe just doing an annual basis, maybe you do it out two or three years where you have to have a contractor do it and lock that in and get, and make sure the material's available. So absolutely.
Jeff, is this something that traditionally you would recommend that we, that we work on and start doing some of the numbers and the timeline before we get the assessment from DLA? Or would you, would that happen after at the same time?
Certain things we could do ahead of time. A lot of it really should depend on what DLA comes up with. I mean, they're going to find the major things that need to happen. As, you know, and I assume they're going to give us, you know, okay, this, this air handling unit is going to be good for another five years. After that, you know, you're rolling the dice whether it's going to last or not. And you can start building a budget around those major things. But some of these, like painting a classroom or replacing the carpet in a classroom, we can go ahead and, and develop budgets for those now.
Good idea.
And, and I would recommend doing it that way.
I like that.
Some are projects.
Correct. Exactly. Or even break for that matter.
So there's three or, actually I believe there's three pages of this. So these are just kind of major ones. You have the classroom, parking lots, painting, building exterior. I don't have the clicker. We went into kind of district vehicles, other structures, public spaces, if you will. And then outdoor facilities, HVAC, bathrooms, cafeteria, kitchen equipment. Are kind of major things that, I believe HVAC and obviously kind of exterior and building envelope stuff will come from DLA. But there's some stuff inside that quite honestly probably won't, you know, so it's, it's better to.
Yeah.
So what I'm hearing is recognizing DLA will do some of this work. Let's not do double work until we see what they've got. But some of this we know isn't going to be in DLA, so let's go ahead and start pricing that out.
Yep.
Okay. Other questions for Jeff in this area?
Thanks, Jeff.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
So you'll come back to us with what the, the projects will be for the next couple of years?
Yeah. What we would come back to is probably initially a timeline and costs for stuff that DLA isn't going to include. We're going to have to come back a second time once we get the DLA project. And then what you should expect from us then on an annual basis is, does the timeline we have here fit within the budget that we're giving you on an annual basis when you approve the budget? But yes, we will, we would, we would, you would want us to come back probably a couple of times with timelines and dollar amounts over the next six to nine months. Okay, Mike, you want to go? Mike's going to go through just some, let's see, budget and staffing priorities and budget requests that we've been getting as we go through our budgeting process.
So here are some of the staffing priorities. I mean, it, it comes down to hiring the best quality candidates. And this is the list of positions that we have open right now. We got the Director of Multilingual Services and Family Engagement, the Assistant Director of Athletics and Activities, English Language Learners, Teachers, Student Services Staff, Maintenance Staff, Bus Drivers and Van Drivers. Again, budget priorities for next year, we're working with DLA to develop a capital needs assessment, which we should be getting August, September. So it'll be right just kind of in time for the budget before we go public with it. And that'll help address some of the billing concerns, the capital projects like we had just discussed. And then part of that will also be kind of repurposing of spaces too, to kind of get the best utilization out of those spaces.
Are there other budget, like staffing priorities that have been on the board's radar or discussion in the past?
The psychologists are in here?
The psychologists would fit under Student Services Staff.
Social worker? Right, with that, that's part of it.
We haven't posted any new, other than the school psychologists, we haven't come to you yet with a proposal for a Student Services Department. We're still working with internal staff around what they feel like that should look like and where they feel like the gaps are. And I think in actually a week and a half, we're getting some presentations from the Student Services Departments on recommendations for those, those staffing priorities for next year.
Safety is where?
Safety's got its own slide coming up.
So next slide. So this is when I'm working with the lead teachers and department kind of leaders, if you will, just kind of budget request themes for next year. Really, these are kind of the six pillars of driving student engagement. A lot more interactive classroom lab activities, hands-on activities, get kids re-engaged, get them re-in, like reinvigorated, if you will.
But what does that mean?
That means doing a lot more hands-on classroom experiences. I, I put in a way kind of the cell phone thing and re-engaging back deep into, into the learning process and being much more hands-on.
Right, but it's a budget request.
So more consumables, materials, things of those nature.
Consumable.
Stuff that you can, am I wrong? Or just stuff that you can touch and manipulate and use? Feel tangible, if you will. So department, going through departmental orders here, we're talking about sports uniforms on a rotation, ban instrument rotation, replacement of damaged beyond repair items and banned. Increased safety protocols, additional security measures, more supervision, deferred maintenance concerns, HVAC issues, water leaks, building maintenance programs, if you will. Stakeholder engagement. This is building internal trust and creating relationships. And then I call this whole section just new beginnings, a sense of hope and optimism, if you will, since the referendum has passed and kind of going forward with it.
Fresh new start.
We've got a couple of slides specific on security and safety, but are there other? So this is what we're getting from staff and some of this is to just let you know what we're getting as Mike does budget meetings with each of the department leaders.
I think that all sounds great.
If I keep going, Mike? Okay, so one of our big safety and security requests is under additional security measures. We'd like to request moving our security staffing and to in-house security staffing. We'd like to request moving our security staffing and to in-house security staffing, security staff. This is a pretty big ask, so just wanted to walk through some of the pros and cons of that and some of the cost structure. So, let's see, currently, the contract that we have with Howe Security, Howe Security is an external agency. They're providing security staff. At max, at the highest staff point during the day, we have seven guards at each campus. That includes the front desk. Howe also staffs our nights, weekends and summer school. So what we're proposing to increase the capacity and, and quality of the staff is that we bring some of those in-house and we run a hybrid program. The hybrid scenario would keep Howe running the front desk during the day, nights, weekends and summer school. One of the main reasons why we'd like to continue to stay engaged with Howe is because security staffing traditionally has the staff move in and out. And Howe, if someone calls in sick, Howe employee is sick, Howe on their backend replaces that with a body. And even if that person is.
A body we wouldn't have.
A body we wouldn't have, yeah. So on any given day, if someone's sick, they walk through that process. And doing that for the nights and the weekends is significant. And then continuing to have someone that, in that front desk position every day from Howe makes some sense to us. So we've got a couple different scenarios here where this, the in-house security guards that are walking the hallways, interacting with students throughout the day are ours. We looked initially at a cost neutral scenario, which would bring us to three in-house security guards plus the Howe front desk person. So it's three in-house security guard, but remember with the Howe assignments, that includes a front desk. So if we wanna stay cost neutral, we'd be going from seven bodies down to four. Hybrid scenario two is a little bit above that. Hybrid scenario one would be fairly difficult because we're losing three belly buttons at each campus. We could go down just two belly buttons and that would cost us slightly more. We'd be at around $700,000. Well, we've got the third scenario there where we stay neutral as far as the amount of people that are in those positions. So it'd be six in-house plus the Howe front desk, that's seven. That's what we have right now. That would be about $885,000. So that's, what is that, $250,000? About a quarter million dollar increase. One of the things to consider when we have internal staff is that, as I mentioned, when Howe is staffing it, they provide an extra body if someone calls in sick. So a six internal people, if they're using between 12 and 15, six slash personal days throughout the year, that leaves us with seventy some odd, eighty uncovered days. And so another option would be to actually increase the number of in-house guards per campus. So it'd be an extra person on paper, but it would make sure that on any given day we're not staffed less than what we're staffed right now. I think there's some different pros and cons to both of those. We do believe that if we bring in the security staff internal, that having our own people do it will increase the capacity and the commitment of the guards while maintaining a relationship with Howe will help us with some of the staffing circles that happen generally in the security world. So looking for some feedback. We don't have to make a final decision right now, tonight, but definitely wanna come back with a proposal here in the next couple of weeks. And so we'd like some feedback from the board on that.
Two things. One, I know we talked originally about trying to be cost neutral. I don't think that's feasible. One, because we'd be trying to be cost neutral with a system that's not working right now. So that wouldn't make sense. I think we have to spend more money. And I'm questioning having Howe continue with the front desk during the day. It just seems odd, everybody during the day would work for us except for the front desk. And it seems like that could lead to some disconnect on who's actually managing the front desk. Is it Howe? Is it us? I think the front desk is a critical part of being part of the team. I think they should be in-house as well.
Being part of the organization.
I think part of the reason, the thinking of it was that if Howe's doing it, then they'll be responsible for filling it if that guy's absent. But if it's our guy, or our person, I should say, excuse me, our person, then we'd have to take somebody off the floor to fill in for him.
Correct.
Right.
Her while they're out sick or on vacation or whatever the case may be.
Right, but even.
Behind a person so we can afford the time to do that.
Right.
We just cross train people.
So you're saying our own guy plus the seven in-house? So we'd have eight in-house? Which would be.
That could be, you know, hybrid. What I'm hearing Mr. Schultz say is that instead of having Howe assigned to the front desk, each of those scenarios, maybe instead of three in-house or four in-house or six in-house, it's actually four, five, seven and eight.
Correct.
And we've got some differentiated costs. The cost of the front desk person is there. It's a little bit less expensive with Howe because those individuals are getting paid less. We would encumber those costs by having that person be internal.
Rather than internal person who's trained better and is under our control, for lack of a better term?
Sure.
That's, the front desk is right where people come in. We need somebody strong and solid there.
Okay, that's good feedback.
I'm looking at this and I don't see, this is just staffing, this is not equipment. The biggest difference, biggest difference I see is security director. What do you perceive a security director to be?
Yeah, great question. So on a day-to-day basis, as the security directors first and foremost is gonna be overseeing though the on-floor staff that are doing the security. So they're on a day, every day gonna be looking at, hey, do I have a full crew today or do I not have a full crew? If they don't have a full crew, they're gonna have to do some reassignments. They're probably having a daily meeting with those staff. They're overseeing the efficiency and efficacy of our equipment, monitoring the equipment and probably then being a liaison between the dean's office, who's doing the student safety, direct work with the students and the security staff. Right now, we have a liaison with Howe and so they are providing that service. If that helps, does that help?
I'm assuming he has a direct hotline with gurney police.
Definitely, yeah, definitely. Yeah, definitely meeting on a daily basis with the school resource officers as part of those daily, daily contacts.
Sometimes if you're lucky, like that person could be, cause when you're in law enforcement, you put in your 20 years and you're retired, so it's maybe somebody looking to work another 10. And then they have, we have on our staff in addition to the SRO, someone who can speak the language of law enforcement and be a great translator.
Right now only our school resource officer is armed? Yeah. If that be my recommendation, I would not recommend these individuals be armed. Other feedback?
Would this person be, the front desk person be responsible for being the guard watch of the cameras, you know, like what's going on? Or is that something separate?
Yeah, so there'd probably be some dual role with an internal security director. They would have some responsibility around the cameras. And then currently our front desk individuals do have some camera oversight. That's one of the things we're re-looking at because the front desk people sometimes are paying attention to the cameras or right now our entrance desks are pretty high. And so we are looking at some, a different setup for entrances, at least for those staff so they've got a little bit easier access to people as they walk in.
Front desk, if you will, goes back to a year-round position, including the summer school, winter sport, like continuous. That'd be year-round versus just when school's in session.
What about training, additional training on, you know, when there's fights and all that stuff?
Yeah, the security director would oversee the training for those staff members as well.
How to manage escalated events?
We have, we do, we have had an external individual come in this last semester to provide some de-escalation training for some of our staff members, our support staff and some of our staff in different departments. So we're continuing to look at that possibly for additional clerical and administrators as well.
Does the SRO report to security or does security report to SRO?
SROs report directly to the police department. So we're liaising with them and they generally have a, one of the deans is their primary contact at each, at each campus.
Is that a good idea?
Yeah, so probably, we'd have to rethink, what I was explaining is current practice. So we'd probably have to rethink how that looked if we had an internal security director.
What about when they, when we do like well-check visits or due to truancy? Is it the SRO that currently does it?
Correct, yes.
And that would continue to be the SRO?
That would probably continue. I'd rather do that than having our, our staff go to homes in most cases. Sometimes we might have a staff member go with a school resource officer, like an administrator might go with a school resource officer. That's generally our practice that the school resource officer doing that.
And then last question on that, just out of curiosity. If we do a home visit, it's not our practice right to call the police department for something? Because I, I would feel that especially for like the brown and black families, something could escalate pretty easily and then put the family or a student in a, in a position where we could have avoided police contact and just kept it to administrative staff or the SRO and kept it at a.
SRO is a police officer. He's going in a police uniform with a gun.
Okay.
That's who goes. Now, that's, I mean, just telling you.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's what's happening today.
Okay.
So we're, they are seeing the police when we're gonna go on a wellness visit.
On a wellness visit, right.
So far.
Yeah, okay.
Generally, something is happening that a teacher or a staff member sees that they're concerned to the level, you know, if there's a safety concern, they are reporting that to Child and Family Services. And if a police officer sees something, they're gonna, because our school resource officer would report directly to the police department, they're gonna follow through with that probably.
Yep.
These visitors are made when? Evening?
They could be during the day, yeah. They could be during the day.
The SRO's out of the building.
Sometimes, yep.
Sometimes you have to check on them because it's a well-being checkup or it's due to truancy, right? Like they haven't showed up to school for X amount of days and no one can get ahold of the parents.
I understand that. I just question whether the SRO should be the person doing that or whatever. I don't know if that's the way it's.
Problem is you send somebody to somebody's house without some protection, the administrators aren't gonna go.
The school resource officer on occasion is out also for training or for, sometimes they'll have a meeting with the police department. So there are isolated incidents where the school resource officer isn't in, on the campus. If we have issues that come up, then we call in a street officer for any, any concerns that we have. What I, what I'm hearing from Mr. Schultz was consider, probably not consider scenario one or two, and maybe look to staff up higher by replace day-to-day front desk with another internal candidate.
Correct.
Okay, we can go back and do some work on that.
I certainly don't see any reduction in the number of bodies we have in the school as something that I would like to see done.
Okay.
And if we have to increase by one, then we increase by one. I mean, cause at this point, other than the education of these children, which is what we're here for mostly, trying to keep order is.
Safety.
Safety is our, you know, number two priority. Let's remember one really, but I mean.
We should do everything we can afford to do reasonably.
Okay. All right, we'll bring back a proposal for that, formal proposal.
Okay.
I think this is our last topic for the night is a continued discussion around door access and cameras. We're gonna give a quick report on door access. I think the board asked us to do a little bit more work, come back with some additional ideas. We're gonna talk a little bit about, more about video expansion after we did some homework on there. And then we're gonna end, if it's okay, by going into closed session to talk a little bit more specifically around security protocol with the video cameras. It'll probably be like a five to 10 minute conversation in the board conference room.
We can look at the doors while we're walking up there.
So just going back to the door, the door access overhaul that the board approved back in February, we're 95% complete. Allman campus is done. O'Plane was done. We were able to make the, the cutover without anybody even knowing that we did it with the crews working nights and, and be able to work in the buildings without interrupting any services during the day. Right now, the only things that are outstanding on that initial project is transportation. There are, there's a couple runs out there where there's fob readers on some exterior gates. So we have to wait for the ground to thaw so we can pull the cables that we need to actually finish that project. But it's scheduled, we just have to wait a little bit longer for the ground to warm up. And then our initial Bluetooth readers are, arrived last week, so we scheduled that work. So we'll have the, the Verkata Bluetooth readers at our main points of entry. So once we get those up and working, people will be able to fob into the buildings just with a Bluetooth reader on their phone. So we have to get those installed and configured and then we'll be able to start utilizing those. So then I'll let Pat talk about the next proposed additional security measures.
But I have a question first. Just as a reminder to everybody, we now have a fob on every door or we still have doors without fobs?
We're gonna talk about that next.
Okay.
But the phone reader is just for adults, like the staff? But kids aren't gonna have?
Kids, no, no, it's just for staff. Just for staff.
You've gotta use your phone for something.
In regards to the additional outside doors, we wanna limit access. We don't want people entering every door. We wanna funnel in the certain doors in the building. So it's of our opinion that we shouldn't fob every door because we don't want every door used. We don't want them as a welcoming area. We do have some doors with keys that are able to key, like Mr. Anderson had brought up to us. And what we're proposing is we would eliminate that key. Get that blanked out, cause some doors have blanks on them, so they must have done some doors in the past. It's not that many. So those, the idea of a lot of keys floating around is a non-issue because we would take the keys out of those doors.
Change the keys on all the existing doors that have keys.
Correct. So the doors that do have to have keys are gonna be changed and there's only gonna be about three people with those keys. Danny will have a key, I'm guessing Jose, actually four, Michelle and Rob. That would make sense to me that those four people would have that key. No one else would have that key. That way, when someone entered a door and they fobbed, we got them on camera and we know exactly when they hit it.
If that key gets lost, anybody loses it, you have to go back and change them.
Yep.
Immediately.
There's not many doors with keys, so it's just not a big project.
I understand. I understand. I'm with you.
I agree, Mr. Anderson, I agree.
So have you done any planning if it was an internal person who goes a little haywire?
What?
Like, like the.
What happened in the bank yesterday, the day before?
We're just talking about the actual physical security of the door here.
Yeah, but I mean hypothetically, one of us board members goes nuts and decides he wants to.
We're not going to.
We could shut, we could shut off your fob access remotely.
Okay.
Immediately. Through, through our phone, we could do it. That's the benefit of going to the Bluetooth readers.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to, like if it's internal, someone internal who is doing something, how fast can we act on it?
So with, one of the features of Verkata is we are now able to turn off, everything's managed through Active Directory. Everybody that is, has a fob is on a named account. So if there is an issue, we can immediately, if I'm notified or Pat's notified, it can immediately disable access, eliminate them from having any access to anything. We could also, like, if there's some question about, did somebody do something that they shouldn't have at some point? We have video about 10 to 15 seconds before when they used a card to a certain amount of time afterwards. So we will see everything and we can immediately restrict access to only, and like if we lock the buildings down, then we have tiered access, so only specific people or specific, with specific permissions can actually, our readers would actually work or the fobs would work.
And I would highlight this, I'm just gonna bring up something I think is important from the board perspective. There were some individuals, I think even on the board, where when we switched over the system, their fob didn't work. That's synonymous with maybe a key that nobody knows exists, like a master key being copied and is out there. Because the reason that happened to some people was because they had gotten a fob that wasn't synced to your Active Directory. So it's really important for us to have systems that are synced to Active Directory so we don't have disparate ways to take people on and off.
We need to get fobs instead of having these old badges.
We will need to get you a fob if you can.
So your phone will work. You actually, those, those badges will continue to work for a little while. So, because right now, your, your badge is in the new system. So, but we're not, we're not buying more of those. So if that ever wears out where it's not working, we would give you a fob at that point or you just use your phone. So one thing, so moving, so we're, again, we're just talking about perimeter security here, right? We're, we're, we're locking, we're talking about just the door access. So the, uh, the board asked us to investigate a couple different scenarios of a couple months back. So we went through uh with Verkata and our cable, and our cabling vendor, and we found, got a cost of about a hundred twenty-seven thousand. That would put a reader on every exterior door in the entire district. That's, and that's just the electronics, that doesn't, that doesn't even include adding handles, latches, any of that. So what we are recommending though, is we're actually recommending, we do not do that. As Dr. Keely said, we wanna funnel people through specific points. There's places that make sense for access to the buildings. We're recommending we add three readers to three doors at Allmond and eleven doors at O'Plane for a total cost of seventy-four thousand dollars. This would limit access to specific doors. It would uh, not all exterior doors even have handles, some of them are just blank, you know, blank slab doors on field houses and gyms. Uh, and not all exterior doors should even be considered for points of entry. Uh, so Danny, if you go to the next slide.
Hold on one second, Chris.
Yes.
There's eleven extra door entrances to O'Plane that we wanna put this on?
Yeah, I'm gonna bring them-
Does that seem like a lot?
O'Plane has a lot of doors.
I know it has a lot of, no, I know it has a lot of doors, but it's, does it make sense that we'd want, wanna, wanna try and funnel people through less doors?
We could, we can start with O'Plane right here.
And part of it, as you're looking at this map, Paul, it's, it's a great question. But think about it, we also thought about it from a long-term standpoint with Eric, if they're responding to it all. We wanted to make sure they had access to-
Can we give out, can we give out different levels of fobs, if you will?
Yes.
So emergency responders have access to every entrance and the average employee like me has access to three or four entrances?
My request of, if there was an active shooter outside, you want teachers to bring kids in as quick as possible with the nearest door possible? Also, I mean, it's no secret, I work as an administrator in another district, oversee safety. We badged every exterior door and not only does every squad car have it, but every fire department vehicle has it too. Cause you want first responders to be able to enter in the, wherever the threat is or wherever the fire is. We don't need them coming in, checking at the front, walking halfway across the building. And to answer your question, and these guys are better suited for it, hundred percent. Like you can program these doors every which way and say, certain security groups get twenty-four seven access all doors. Teacher and staff groups get these doors these ti- so you can slice and dice it however you want, however you want. So yes, there is a scenario where you could still do that. And then our uh law enforcement and fire, like partners, would always have twenty-four seven access.
Thank you, I appreciate the additional information.
Please correct me if I'm wrong. I don't wanna speak for you guys.
So the yellow is what exists right now. So we look at Allmond, Allmond has met a lot fewer doors. So when you look at Allmond right now, most of the, where, what we would say is strategic points of entry already, already have readers on them. So really what we're, the only three that we're talking about at Allmond, there's a kiln in the back of the fine arts that we wanna make sure if there's a fire in the kiln, we can get into it right away. Uh, there's on the long spine here where you kinda, where, you know, most of you fobbing through the, at the, at the hallway, there's, there's one side door there that comes right into, here, I'll just come point easier.
So this side door right here, like it makes sense to have another point of access. So if something happens up here, we can get in through the main, main entrance right here, so we don't really need one at- Here, you can then come in, you have access to the three hundred wing right there. And then there is down along the front of the building, you know, kind of has that, you can go down into that little grassy area.
Any questions about um door access before we move on to?
Good.
Are you, are you interested in the putting a reader on every available door? Or is there interest in kinda meeting in the middle and, and going with these fourteen additional that we found?
A thousand dollars, I'd put it on all the doors.
All the doors.
I don't want somebody asking me later on why I didn't do it. That's just me.
I agree with that.
So I think what we would do then is we'd go back and probably start to work with some other vendors for the fits, cause this is just a technology fee. Um, we'd have to do a little bit more work then on what it would cost to replace doors, insert strikes and some of the other things that would go with that project.
I mean, I've started off by saying every door because when you're in the middle of an emergency, even if the two doors are in, within twenty-five feet, no one's gonna think through, wait a minute, this is the one where I can get into, this is the one where I can't. I mean, when people are in the middle of a crisis and adrenaline's flowing, some people have been known to forget the number to nine-one-one. So door, enter, get in, um, and it just, seconds can save lives. So when I, when I look in at, as far as the size of our budget, and I know that one-twenty-seven may grow, to me, that's incremental for, um, so I, I'm gonna stick by my opinion of, of every door. But I also get their perspective too, like you actually made a pretty good point with your maps, how there's a couple doors right next to each other. At least you're servicing the area, it's not every door. My only counter to that is when things are going down, it's, it's too hard to think through which doors, which-
Want people hunting for which doors?
I don't want the local police department to think, I just want them to see door, entry, get in.
It is a lot of time.
It can be.
So can you do this seventy-four thousand and then do the rest later? Or did you wanna do them all at the same time or?
I guess the way I would look at it is, I wouldn't wanna slow down the seventy-four thousand dollars, but do the other one, you know, as subsequently, but without much of a delay.
So if we wanna look at it in terms of like a, like a three-phase project, if phase one was just completed, phase two would be the seventy-four thousand and phase three is probably a little bit more complex with just figuring out some of the door replacements and things of that nature.
I think that's what we'd be looking for.
Okay.
And those doors, the last doors would maybe only work with the first responders, fobs. They wouldn't have to work with anybody else's.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we should just talk, we'll just, we'll come back and we'll talk through that a little bit more to talk through exactly what phase three would look like. Cause I think there's some different perspectives on that. So we'll do some more research probably and talk to PDE, talk to some staff about that.
Yeah, we definitely need to do a lot of work uh to get that third phase figured out.
Well, it's a good argument for doing it in phases though, cause you're solving, if we're not trying to do it all at once. I mean, we may not want to just for budget reasons and time reasons to manage projects like this, there's real time associated with it. But at least you're getting general areas served and then from there, refine if needed. So I, yeah, the phase approach, I think, is a good strategy.
I disagree, I think you should do all of it as fast as you can, period, done, now.
I think that's kinda what we're saying.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
You have to do more work to get the last few doors, but let's not wait on the few that we can do now.
Yeah, we definitely can do some now if they already have uh some technology on them.
So you, just to, I'll make sure that I, I'm clear. So I'm, I'm at our next board meeting, bringing forward the uh, the proposal for like what we're gonna consider phase two, so we can get that work scheduled and planned and implemented. We'll begin working on, which will get us to a much better space than we are right now and then figure, uh, come back then with some details on how we can finish every door.
Correct.
But for now, we're implementing-
Yes, adding the three at Allmond, the eleven at O'Plane, uh, and then we'll continue to, then we'll put together a full plan for a, a third phase.
Any idea how long the third phase would take?
Nope. I, no.
Exterior doors is twelve, fourteen, sixteen weeks, just FYI.
To order, wow.
Everything is fourteen weeks.
I do mean everything.
I just renewed my uh notary stamp and it said twelve to fourteen weeks.
Took me five months to get my car repaired after my daughter crashed it.
Oh, no.
Before I ever could, he says, here's the estimate, I'll see you in November.
Don't let your daughter drive her car there.
Trust me.
Okay, um, so our video camera uh upgrade project, so our current video servers are at the end of their lives. Uh, we are currently behind in our, our camera implementation. We have all cameras that are so old, we can't even run current video software in the district. Uh, so it's just, again, it's an issue of, like we were talking about with facilities earlier, not being able to maintain with what we needed to do over the past several years. So as we began to look at our, what we need to do for a video camera upgrade, uh, Dr. Keely, myself worked through and kinda developed a sec- a security strategy of listening to what, uh, feedback from our deans and other users in the system. So we wanted a cloud-based system, so we're not reliant on local servers, which have a tendency to crash, limit storage capability. We wanted to be in the cloud. We wanted user-friendly uh systems that are accessible from anywhere, from any device. We wanted systems that are integrated under one umbrella, so as Tony was saying, you know, in an emergency, we don't wanna think, we just wanna be able to go do. And we've talked a lot about Active Directory, Active Directory. Active Directory is just a, it's that, it's a system on our network. Every organization that runs enterprise networks has it, that's every user. Like when you come into the organization, you are assigned roles, permissions, rights, everything. And then when you are no longer with the district, those all go away. So we can control who has access to what systems and what parts of the network and different things through Active Directory. So our network administrator, myself, have really been leveraging that over the last three years to make uh unify our, like make our network more streamlined. And we wanna continue that process here. So for our planning process, uh, we've reviewed uh three vendors. Um, those vendors reviewed our existing system, provided demo, uh, we reviewed demo cameras to deploy on site. Uh, that we uh had proposed deployments. We reviewed um the proposal from vendor, we, we reviewed the deployment proposal with our deans, our school resource officers, our technology staff that's responsible for our video ser- uh services or surveillance, uh, Dr. Keely and myself. The vendors considered, we looked at uh Rambus, Maraki and Verkata. Our administration, our recommendation is Verkata. Uh, we're gonna go through a few slides, kinda giving you some information about those three vendors and those two other comps. Uh, so you can, and kind of describe how we arrived at our uh proposal. So before I talk about Rambus, I think it's important to just talk about our current annual camera budget. Uh, so right now, or leading up to now, we spend about thirty thousand dollars a year budgeted to try and cycle out old cameras that are aging out. Thirty thousand dollars is not enough to maintain, uh, keep up with cameras that are aging. Um, addition, in addition to that, since we're running a server-based system, every five years, four to five years, we have to upgrade video servers, which comes in the tune of ninety to a hundred thousand dollars to cover the campuses and then a smaller one to run out of transportation. So in general, and what we're spending right now, we're probably between fifty to sixty thousand dollars if you average out the, the um cost of the two rounds of video servers over ten years and the uh cost of, annual cost of updating cameras. So Rambus is a very similar concept of Verkata. They're an emerging company, uh, their interface, interface is not as well as developed as Verkata. Uh, they're, they're very new, um, they're pushing hard in the education sector right now, uh, but they're very, very new. It is, we believe it's a possible solution in ten years, where everything we're looking at is a ten-year license. Uh, we think that they're gonna be a strong competitor if they stick around and continue to develop their product. We think it'll be a strong competitor with Verkata in ten years. So the initial proposal uh from Rambus and Maraki was for two-hundred-and-forty cameras, cause at the time, that's what we thought we were going to be implementing in the district. Uh, as we decided to move, we wanted to move forward with Verkata in some more detail, we did some more revisions with Verkata. To, we ended up coming up to about two-hundred-and-eighty-two cameras. So we kind of extrapolated the uh cost per camera from their initial quote up to the two-eighty-two to give an apples-to-apples comparison. Uh, so two-hundred-and-eighty-two cameras with licensing for Rambus would be about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand over ten year, for a ten-year license. So that comes out to about seventy-five thousand dollars a year, uh, which is a cost of about two-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars per camera on their proposal. So Maraki uh was another solution we looked at. Uh, that's an attractive off, uh, solution for us because our, our entire network is Cisco-Maraki at this point. Our switching, our wireless, our firewall, so there was an advantage to us in terms of visibility on the network and being able to see the different aspects of the Maraki system on the backend. It is a cloud-based solution like the others, it interacts well with our network because it's all under one company. Uh, some drawbacks is an open source integration to bring in other systems, so you can do it, but it requires additional programming. So their, their solution is not all-encompassing, which is one of the things that we were looking for. There's limited implementations to date in Lake County, there's really not anybody necessarily leveraging Maraki in the, in the education space. Uh, and the interface looks very similar to what we have right now, which is uh from the dean's feedback, it's not the type of interface that they're looking for. It's not as intuitive, it's not as easy to use as uh what they're looking for. Uh, their proposal, two-hundred-and-eighty, similar to Rambus, we had to kind of extrapolate out two-hundred-and-eighty-two cameras. What came out to seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, which is about seventy-three thousand dollars per year, which is two-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars per camera. So Verkata is uh our recommendation and wanna highlight uh three specific things on that list. Uh, Verkata does unify the door access, video surveillance and mass notification all under one umbrella. So in the event of any sort of emergency, we have access to videos, we can lock down a building, we can uh trigger mass notification devices throughout the district. We can do it from a laptop, a mobile phone, and a button anywhere in the district. It has higher resolution and retention rates than um anything we currently have. All of these cameras are, are high quality from all three vendors, but the Verkata, uh, Solu, the Verkata cameras are very, very um high quality and have excellent zoom capability. Um, they're easily accessed remotely via web or mobile device. They have an app, you can use it on a phone, you can use it on an iPad, it works, it's web-based. So some of the technological gymnastics we've had to do to get the Gurnee PD and Lake County Sheriff's Department uh into our video service, our video surveillance systems no longer exist. So we are, and we are able to create them as named users, so we can give them access, help control access. Uh, so in the event of an emergency, they'll be able to hit it from wherever, they won't need any sort of um, any sort of adjustment or anything on their end, it'll be logged right in. Uh, other things that I wanna highlight as well, it's cloud-based. Uh, the advantage of being cloud-based, again, is we don't have server space that we're using up. Uh, like we're paying for a license, we're paying for storage space. So every one of these cameras has its own hard drive and every one of these cameras is backing up to the cloud and every one of these cameras is, is backing up thirty days. So right now, we can save about fourteen.
Verkata commonly used in Lake County or not?
Right now, uh, Verkata is uh deployed at uh one-twenty-eight at Zion Benton. Fifty-six is about to uh install Verkata throughout the district as well.
Relatively new, that we could be a showplace and they could get a discount in return for being a sponsor, you know, if they were looking to sell to other schools, that's all.
Verkata's becoming a little bit more well-established, but uh they're very excited about uh working with us as uh-
Livers at some of those.
Yes, absolutely. Um, and uh some of the, it has some advanced search capabilities that we'll talk a little bit more about later. Uh, overall, for Verkata's proposal, two-hundred-and-eighty-two cameras with licensing is seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, which is about seventy-two thousand dollars per year for twenty-five, fifty-five per camera, which makes it also the least expensive of the three vendors that we looked at. Thing's important to note too, the, it's a ten-year license, every camera has a ten-year warranty. So if a camera breaks, we call Verkata and a new camera shows up the next day. And every, every district that I spoke with that has a Verkata implementation, I asked them that direct question if, does this actually play out the way Verkata's telling me that it plays out? And every district said, yes, we have, if we, if in the rare event we had a camera go down and it was related to a hardware failure, we had a camera the next day. And the one other nice thing about it too is on your system, if a camera goes down, we get an email exactly when a camera goes down. Yes.
So being that technology is changing constantly and now we're gonna invest in a ten-year camera, but something better and exciting and whatever happens in six years, then we're stuck not being able to update because we're in a ten-year contract.
There's a five-year option for Verkata. I didn't necessarily bring that forward because it's a ten-year, um, like the warranty's a ten-year. Uh, the cameras that we're looking at are eight megapixel, some of them are four K, some of them are five megapixel. So like they're, they're extremely high resolution and the district, other districts that I spoke with are all in ten-year implementations. Like their, their user interface will update as things go, so, and everything will continue to function. And one thing they did tell us, cause I did ask kinda similar, not exactly that question, Natalia, but a similar one. Uh, if, what if a camera breaks in year six and you don't have that camera anymore, what do, what happens then? We get the new version of that camera.
We can definitely find out what the five-year option cost would be.
Yeah, I mean, like, I'm just saying, like iPhones are changing every two years, why wouldn't, you know, like technol- technology is just-
A lot of it is, a lot of it happens in the software, um, and not so much in the camera itself.
They're gonna operate anyway.
And if it breaks down, they don't have it, we would get the new version.
Sure, it's a lot less expensive over ten years, cause they're amortizing the cost of the cameras for ten years.
It, it, when the, the initial quote came in, it was significantly more expensive annually for a five-year license.
When is Ken Trump coming?
Um, we initially, what he told us was that he'd be available at the twenty, the meeting on April twenty-fifth. So we are intending on reviewing uh his audits on the twenty-fifth in closed session. Our, uh, we do have about five to ten more minutes uh that we'd like to talk about the video acc- Our, we do have about five to 10 more minutes that we'd like to talk about the video access. That's probably more appropriate for closed session. That's all we have.
Unless there's other questions that-
I, I did follow up with Chris after that one board meeting and I got all my questions answered. So I'm 100%. I am actually.
If he's good, I'm with him.
Yeah. No, it's, it's stuff, in, in Chris's defense, it's all stuff he wrote out in the documents I shot, I should have like read with care. Because all he did was reiterate what he already wrote down. So thank you, Chris, for handholding me through that.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else? If not, I move to adjourn the committee of the whole and reconvene the regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.